Commissioners, the meeting is live.
Okay. I call this December twenty-third meeting of the Riley County Commission to Order. Please everybody do my mean or please believe it.
Applause allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning on this eve of Christmas Eve, something like that is what they say.
Mm hmm.
Not feeling quite suitable yet. Guess they're saying no white Christmas this year?
Well, maybe rain.
They have to get cotton balls or something and just throw them up in the air and pretend not to know. Guess we'll start off with some public comment. I think we have some this morning.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm Shannon with the Reach Committee and I'm here to present the Employee of the Month award. And this person actually received a couple of nominations, but I'm just gonna go through one of them. And so, Kynan. You've been nominated as Employee of the Month. Um, so this nomination came to us anonymously. It said that you've been a custodian for Riley County Health Department for many years and an important part of the health department. Um, your hard work often goes unnoticed, but it is essential to keeping the building and the operations running smoothly. Recently, Kynan um has gone above and beyond by taking care of both the health department buildings on her own while her coworker transitioned to retirement. And I understand too that there was some more transitioning and onboarding the new staff as well. So congratulations on that. This has been a big job for Kynan and she handled it with a positive attitude and determination. She made sure the building stayed clean, safe, and welcome welcoming to the stock of visitors. We sometimes forget to notice the people working behind the scenes, but Kynan's efforts are a big part of the way the health department runs so well. She is reliable and hardworking. So we hope this nomination shows you how much you are valued and everything we do for Riley County means so much to us. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Come right on in here in the center here and we'll get a couple pictures, yeah.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Last one.
Congratulations, Dennis. Thanks for you for your part. Well, it's a good way to start the Christmas, pre-Christmas meeting. So, yeah. Do we have any more public comments this morning? I don't know how you top that one, but try. I guess we'll move on to commission comments and Commissioner McKinley.
All right, well, Thursday after a meeting I met with the uh three county counselors regarding the fencing question in North County.
Did you get three different answers?
Touche.
And actually, uh Jacob went up and checked later on Friday. When viewed in it, it may require offense due in the future, but trying to get it straightened out. And Friday morning I attended this. Yes, I told him that. It wasn't allowed.
I know there's statutory requirements, but yeah.
Yeah.
Around and we will plead.
Certain dates are not that eligible. In Friday morning, I attended the retirement celebration for Clancy Holman who retired after nearly twenty years with Riley County. And Friday afternoon had another legal had a legal question, so I called Brian to get an opinion. He acknowledged he'd been county counsel for all of one and a half hours at that time. Best. We got some answers there. And then uh K-State men on Saturday evening and K-State women on Sunday afternoon both continued the same path this year.
One's good, one's not so good. Yes, yes. Okay.
Consistent.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Consistently inconsistent in one area, but you, we had a fifty-fifty shot of getting that wrong again. All right, well, Thursday, I met with Representative-elect Angel Roser to discuss some upcoming uh the upcoming legislative session, the key policy agenda items and uh both the KAC and Riley County legislative agenda. Uh, had a really good dialogue before deciding what we can get accomplished hopefully during the twenty-twenty-five legislative session. Um, within that ninety-day period, which I don't think is gonna happen, but we'll see. Um, also on Thursday, I listened in on the Council of Foreign Affairs State Local Officials webinar. Uh, December's presentation was Brad W. Sepsor. He's from the Whitney Shepherdson Senior Fellow. Uh, he's also a senior fellow at CFR, former senior advisor to the US Trade Representative. Uh, he discussed the influence of tariffs and the price of US goods and uh what to expect from the second Trump administration and economic policies that will be developed within that. It was a pretty good uh question and answer session that followed as well. Friday morning, I was on Within Reason with uh Mike Mattson. First time I've had the chance to do the new program. Uh, went very well, I think. Um, like the new platform, we discussed county-related items and processes, things where the county continues to work on, uh including comprehensive and strategic planning, economic development. Throughout Riley County, we also discussed my background, aspirations for the future, and personal and professional elements that led me to public service. Um, had a great conversation. Hour went by fast as usual. Um, I could probably go on all morning, but um they don't have that kind of time and sometimes neither do I. So uh also Friday morning, uh I too came over and uh checked out Clancy Holman's retirement party here at the board chambers. Uh, as you can probably imagine, it was very well attended with current former staff as well as many other professionals he's worked with throughout the years. It's great having the chance to catch up with a handful of former county employees that um were here early in my days as a commissioner and um certainly enjoyed and valued the six years working with Clancy and I certainly wish him the best in retirement. Noon, um had a chance to visit with everybody in the Riley County Registered Deeds Office. Um, brought lunch. It was uh last part of that uh Balkanza United Way campaign. Um, of course, I had the joy of giving lunch to the department that had the most donations. It was a little late in the year, but with everything that's happened, I there was just how it kind of worked out, I guess. So brought some AJ's pizza and uh Little Apple Nutrition um teas um to go along with it. So thanks to both the Registered Deeds and everybody at Riley County as a whole for making the entire twenty-twenty-four campaign uh very much so a success. I appreciate that. And then uh yesterday afternoon, I did attend the K-State Cincinnati Women's Basketball Game. Um, Lady Cats won a scrappy game. Cincinnati uh brought their A-game for sure. Uh, seventy-six, fifty-nine, first conference win of the year and it runs their overall record to fourteen-one overseas. And so, go Lady Cats. So, and um all I got.
Ready for business? First item, need a motion for the board to authorize chairman to sign the main contract with Civic Plus for the Civic Clerk as presented.
Oh, I guess Commissioner, that was the uh, this is the actual body of the contract. The contract provisions attachment that they had some.
Oh, that's right. That's true.
So, okay, now we're final plan.
Sure. Final, final.
Final, final. I didn't hear a third one in there, so we'll actually be expecting that.
I moved the board authorized chairman to sign the main contract with Civics Plus Civic Clerk as presented.
Did we have a timeframe on that as implementation?
Uh, we're hoping uh early spring.
Okay, um I'll go ahead and second that motion. So it's been moved and seconded to the board authorized chairman to sign the main contract with Civics Plus for Civics Clerk as presented. All in favor?
Aye. Chair pleads. Lot of paper, only three signatures though, so not too bad.
Just printed them, is that what it is?
I thought there was a spot to sign too.
I think you just, you're turning it.
There's like eight thousand different lines on.
Oh, yeah, I know the way they, okay, so so sign there and then you print there. We can put in the title of these. They did, they did, yeah.
Yeah, they said sign and cram.
I know they did it backwards. Yeah, so they meant to, so they meant to have you sign that line and then yeah, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does now.
I had to do a triple tip on it myself.
You guys get some breakfast pretzels there?
Yeah.
Looks like dark chocolate, so it ought to be semi-healthy anyway.
We'll call it that. Yeah, whatever we need to tell ourselves.
Last year you said there's no calories during the week of Christmas.
The month. Christmas, there's no calories, right, Shneke?
Yeah, I wish my body.
She's a health, she's a health department professional. She would not.
Can you write a note to my doctor, please?
Next commissioners have Riley County Employee Action Forms. Kayla Ward, EMT MS Amles Department Separation Service, Tasha Holcomb, Holcomb, uh Promotion Customer Service uh Reps representative two Treasurers Office. And then Kayla Harris Promotion Appraisers two Residential. I just, I know Christmas is here, but I can't believe it's here.
Yeah.
Well, twenty-five is just.
Man. Thank you. Next commissioners, I need a motion to approve accounts payable and payroll.
I've moved to approve payroll of accounts payable. I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve payroll and accounts payable. All in favor?
Both please. You have any changes in the minutes, commissioners?
Move to approve the minutes in December nineteenth meeting as presented.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the December nineteenth meeting of the Riley County Commission as written. All in favor?
Aye.
How tentative agendas look, commissioners?
Pretty tentative.
Nice and short.
And I see a twenty-five on there too, so.
Yeah, I know. Any items for next week's press conference, commissioners? Okay, next commissioners, you have Michael Rizcall at nine o'clock.
You know, uh I'd like to go to one of the men's games, but uh I mean, there's issue and I'm 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 now staying with football.
Five dollars.
And then Michelle has that.
I have not stopped, I'm very good, but I will. Tom and Alyssa, thanks.
You're gonna chance rain on Thursday.
That's all I can say. It's word. My air mattress is not furnished, we got, oh, and then chairs at Walmart. It got sucked to sit in. Yeah, the furniture did not show up. It was supposed to be there Saturday or Sunday. It did not show up. So, yeah. Needless to say, I'm not thrilled with the movers. Yeah.
Are they gonna show up today like they said or no?
No communication.
Who's your movers?
Huh?
Who's your movers?
Oh, it's some little podunk thing out of Florida.
Oh.
Um, cause we didn't have enough notice evidently with the big companies, you have to have like three months of notice.
Yeah.
And, you know, we didn't, so, yeah. We probably should have went ahead and went that way though because shoot, by the time we get our furniture, it'll probably.
I had the irony of that, huh?
At least we would have known where our furniture was, right? And so, yeah, it's been a fiasco with them and it's been tremendously expensive.
Oh, I bet.
I mean, it's costing us more than the furniture for it. So, it's crazy. I will never do it again. I will. If I ever move again, which I don't plan on moving anytime, anytime. Um, I'll get U-boxes from U-Haul, load them up, have U-Haul come and get them, put them on a semi, take them wherever I'm going and boom. Then all my stuff will be there. But, yeah, but I don't, I'm, I don't want to move ever. Ever.
Got you twice a year in college and since then, I didn't, yeah. Don't wanna do it.
It's way overrated.
Yeah, it is. And then amount of time I've gone into a lot more stuffs, it'll even be harder.
I was in Topeka.
Thought somebody was gonna buy a trailer and just throw it all on there.
Yeah.
It becomes, if it ends up with me, it ends up with me. If it doesn't, oh, well. I'll start over.
Yeah. I was in Topeka for sixteen years on a farm. And uh we had twenty-five acres and raised alpacas and all that stuff. And I mean, when we moved to North Carolina, oh, the stuff we had was just incredible. It was like, oh. It was crazy how much stuff we had. And get rid of it's not easy. Hey, nobody wants your stuff.
Yeah.
Even if it's good stuff. I mean, I thought it was good stuff.
And then four times in a year in my career, they're like, hey, we're done moving now.
You're on your own, girl. Yeah.
Same place for seven years now.
Yeah, you're not the only one on that one.
Yeah.
Brothers, one of his daughters came to K-State.
Yeah.
Moved every semester.
Oh, no.
Oh. Oh.
The first couple, you know, maybe it's just clothes and a few lives, but yeah.
Moved every semester.
If I do happen to move this next time, it's, I think that's gonna be permanent. I don't think I'm gonna move ever again after that. It's done.
It is hard.
Then again, I'm gonna hire, I'm gonna hire somebody young to do it.
Somebody to pack you up and, yeah.
Load it up, move it to one place, unload it, work it up.
Yeah.
I come from two families that like to pack. So they like to have stuff and I have promised myself I won't do that.
Oh, oh.
I have what I need and that's all I'm gonna have.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, I can't imagine packing my husband's stuff because he has a lot of stuff and he likes a lot more stuff and our garage is full, like packed. That I don't think we need. And I'm like, you know, you're gonna die one day. I'm just gonna tell you, I'm gonna sell it all.
Thing is, that station wagon you can pack.
Pack a lot in here. You have that much stuff because that's just agreed to help live.
You know what? The station wagon is still for sale.
My dad was that way. He died in two thousand nine in Texas and he was a collector of tools. Oh my gosh, he had like twenty screwdrivers. It's like, how many screwdrivers is one man need? And so I went down there and it took me probably two weeks just to clean out the basement and it was like, ah.
When my grandfather passed away, that was in nineteen eighty-five. We had more bikes, more TVs, more lawn mowers than any one person should have in an entire lifetime.
It shouldn't be legal to do that.
And that's when I promised myself, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what I did with my dad's stuff.
I hate to say it, bless your heart, but my mom is the same way and we're dealing with that right now as we speak. Clothes.
Yeah.
I didn't realize how many closet full of clothes she has. Unused, dues, shoes. I'm like Salvation Army has been very grateful so far.
Yeah, you can't, you can't wear all those clothes.
She hardly in the last five or six years ever left the house, so there was no need.
My clothes will be the first to go. I, I am not a clothes person. It's like, eh.
You might find that I have quite a few ties, but those are pretty easy.
Oh, ties are awesome. I love ties. Yeah, I love.
And socks. I got, I got your socks and I was but outside of that. Outside of that, you know, we're pretty good. Those you can still in a box, you can still wear everything. This is actually a tie that I got for Christmas. I was trying to wear it because it's supposed to be. So this is Christmas as you're getting for me. Just so you're aware.
A lot of us are worried you make the lights up.
Ramble yesterday. That was hilarious. Well, they found some shooters yesterday though for stuff in that kid in the chair. Yeah, yeah. That little nine-year-old, man, that was impressive. I hope the men's team took notice on that play. Now, you could tell she's played basketball.
She's the basketball player.
Even the shot she missed, it was just barely.
She had the right form. She wouldn't just toss them up there. She knew what she was doing.
Went to the game and a friend of the family took me to Iowa State. He got picked to do that.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he only had a single shot and won. That was kind of cool being next to legend there for a short amount of time. Something, I can't remember what he, he won like a skydiver package or something. Something, yeah, something off the wall.
That would appeal to me, but for a lot of the population.
It appealed to him too. He took him up on it.
Wonder what you get if you lose. Two skydivers.
You only get to skydive once. If you fail on that one, you're kind of done.
There you go.
Yeah. That's not one of those you're gonna do over typically.
Since Starbucks is never far from my mind, my favorite uh barista jewels, she uh
You actually know all the baristas by name?
A few.
You've got a, you've got a problem, dude.
I do.
We need to get you help.
On many things, Commissioner. She, she has several jumps under her um because she was a parachute packer for uh the US Army.
That's a person you don't really want to probably make mad, I would assume.
I gather not. And and so she, that's part of their rules is that you have to every randomly, you have to jump your own pack. And so.
Oh, that makes sense.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'm kind of scared of heights. I don't know. That might be one of my strengths.
You don't ever jump out of a perfectly good plane.
But what if the plane's not perfect? It looks like you have practice.
I do agree with Diane. I have a cousin in town. Uh, he's a year younger than me. He's uh high up in Walmart, but uh he used to be one that used to parachute into the K-State games and he always offered to take me up, but
Yeah.
and they always.
I wouldn't do it by myself.
They always packed their own chute, but uh a friend of his is one that bounced it while me go years ago, if you remember that.
I do remember that.
You always packed your own chute, but yeah, that's why I say never jump out of a perfectly good airplane.
No, no.
So that means you crashed with the bad one?
I mean, there's still a chance you could survive.
That's why I'm not, that's why I'm not big on flying, you know, I'm not, I'm not in control of my own destiny at that point.
You're putting your fate in a lot of different hands, that's for sure. That's a good point. Might wait to, did that moment just jump out of the plane then? You might don't walk away. Boy, this this one, this took a turn. We were talking about Starbucks, look worried.
A little morbid.
So much for Christmas spirit here. Yeah. Might have an extra fifteen minutes this.
Breakfast of champions.
Yes. Probably shouldn't admit this, but I had call.
That was the doctors watching.
Yeah. Had to get it out of the fridge, out of the fridge, out of the freezer, I guess I should say.
Milk in it?
Yeah, right. And it was blueberry Swiss mint, so there was fruit in it.
No, thank you. They look like dark chocolate.
Yeah, I'm a little worried about Thursday. We're gonna have white helmets and white pants. Every time we change uniforms, it doesn't usually end well for us.
Yeah, I don't know. We will see. Hopeful. Be nice to look good going into next.
I'll be honest with you. I do like the white.
It's gonna come out this last weekend.
It's a little sleeker than the.
Dazzing. So I took him to the clinic on Friday. Was running it was all, yeah, all Thursday night. And then, yeah, so Friday. So I took him to the clinic and he still had a hundred and three. They tested for, he has ear infection on the blue. It's fever by the road Saturday afternoon. And so. He's four. It was a hundred and four.
Yeah, yeah, that's scary. That's scary, scary. I was looking at the early baseball schedule. It's not gonna be easy. I think we opened some tournament with LSU. Really, guys?
May as well find out.
Yeah, that's true. First round playoff games were, left a lot to be seen there.
Unfortunately, I didn't even thought they would go to, you know, I was hoping for a upset or two.
At least Indiana. Indiana beat one team and they were ten and one, but.
You look like they didn't belong there really either. I thought that Tennessee Ohio State thing was gonna be pretty good.
Ohio State plays Oregon.
Yeah.
That's gonna be the.
Yeah. Well, they wouldn't get revenge. I mean.
To me, it seems like those two.
Kind of oppressed with Penn State's defense. I don't have much on offense, so it doesn't make up the difference. I think Boise State and Arizona State might be ranked a little too high at this point, so. But it's good to have a meaningful football, college football in the middle of it. Regardless. Dark coming in today with clouds out. Can't believe I darked it well this morning. Well, it was uphill from here. Starts to get lighter out. Ready? Yeah, we need a motion to start. Oh, yeah.
Move, excuse me, I move recess as the Board of County Commissioners convenes Board of.
Second that, it's been moved and set into recess as the Board of County Commissioners, and they reconvene as the Board of County Health. Follow the favor? Start with you, Shneke.
Yes, hopefully you guys meet me. Good morning. I'm Shneke Rose with the Health Department. First, I want to start by saying happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Thank you for taking some time to, um, allow me to present this morning. Um, so what you have before you is a request to fill internally, um, our opioid education and prevention specialists. Um, if you can recall, the Health Department has been doing work in opioid prevention since, uh, two thousand eighteen with our intern work. Um, and in two thousand and twenty-two, I believe, we had applied for a grant, um, and continued that work. Um, and in two thousand and twenty-three, there was some changes where we came to the commission to request that this work continue. Uh, at that time, the county decided to approve a part-time, um, health educator there. Uh, as we continue to grow this position, I want to say it was, uh, July of this year, we came to discuss, um, some changes, uh, with this position. Um, changing it from the community health educator to the opioid education and prevention specialist. To really hone in on what this position has been doing in the community and put emphasis on that education and prevention piece specific to opioids. Um, you then at that time told us to have a conversation about the length of, of the work, like what could we do? It was a twenty-hour, uh, position and that asked at that time was that twenty hours. Um, after talking with the commission and also with HR, we decided to come back to see if we could get approval for a thirty-hour, um, rated job. Um, to allow some expansion in this position and then also that name change which you approved. Uh, what I'd like to discuss in depth is, uh, internally allowing or, um, allowing for the promotion for Jenny to continue the work that she is doing. Uh, in this new revamped role. Um, Jenny has been working with us since September of twenty twenty-three. Is that correct, Jenny? Okay. Um, and she's really been instrumental in the development of this program. She spent, um, lots of her work hours, um, making community partners. Uh, she's involved in pretty much everything as it relates to, um, being community engaged. She has over fifty-six community partners. Um, she's provided hours and hours of prevention training for youth. And also we would like to expand that to, um, the entire community across the lifespan. Um, as you can recall, she does have a similar role in Potawatomi County and that has been valuable with us mirroring a lot of the same, same work. And having that person that's getting the education on both sides. Um, her expertise and knowledge, uh, she's really expanded the opioid education section. Uh, the Health Education Department that we have, our small little department. And she's really good at making sure that we're staying abreast on what is currently happening in the opioid crisis. To make sure that Rida County is, um, looking to continue that prevention work. Some of the things that she has done, I won't read all of these, but she's also our prevention subcommittee, uh, chair. So she's really the person that, uh, with our Substance Misuse Task Force is leading our prevention efforts. And thinking about the ways that we can continue to grow the program and educate our community as well. Um, some highlights here, uh, she's had thirty-six opioid education presentations. And she's reached eight, eighteen, or eighteen-hundred-and-ninety-nine people. And that does not include community partner meetings where she may show up and just provide, um, just general information about what's happening opioid-related. Um, as a person who directly supervises her, uh, her collaboration and teamwork, um, uh, does not go unnoticed. She is very valuable to our team, um, with us also doing our drug and danger children's work. Um, having her here has really helped us in that work and establishing that program as well. So what I'm here to do is see if we can entertain the internal promotion, um, for this job. To allow Jenny to continue the work that she has started, um, and, uh, continue to grow it. Does anyone have any questions or concern? Below here, I know that Elizabeth has prepared the fiscal impact. Brittany's here, if we have any questions with that. And if I recall, this was already in budget, correct? So it wouldn't be any changes.
They have a state, that's a state, right?
Well, it's the opioid, it's the state is getting the opioid funds in on the settlement.
Oh, that's right.
That's a settlement.
Yeah, so, okay. My second question was going to be, does it follow that June, July? But no, we're good.
Yeah, it keeps, it's more than a few years. I'm going to approve the promotion of Jenny Ebert into the expanded role of opioid education and prevention specialist.
No, second that. So it's been moved and seconded. The Board of County Commissioners approve the promotion of Jenny Ebert into the expanded role of the opioid education and prevention specialist. All in favor? All right.
Thank you so much for your time.
But please sign.
Thank you for all your room too, seriously.
Thank you for the opportunity to continue.
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Diane Creek, Health Director for Riley County Health Department. I am here to present a request to expand the position of a medical clerk that we have down in the clinic. Currently, that position was scheduled to end on last Friday, December twentieth. And we have found out that one of our other clerks is going to be gone for six to eight weeks after the first of the year on extended medical leave and that will leave us short-staffed at the front desk. We'll only have one person at the front desk. And so we really need to extend this. It's grant-funded, so it's no cost to the budget at all. It's the COVID nineteen money. Currently, she's working thirty hours a week. I'd like to extend her to forty hours a week to full-time. She can help the clinic director with billing. She can help me. I'm going to start looking at numbers and data for the clinic and so she can free the clinic director up to do or the clinic supervisor to do that as well as help me gather data. So anyway, do you have any questions?
Going from part-time to full-time needs benefits, correct? Is that included in the eighteen change?
So I had to correct the sheet, but she's already been benefit eligible. So the position's already been budgeted for benefits. We're just increasing from thirty hours a week to forty hours a week. Okay.
March twenty-eighth?
Yeah, it'll be until March twenty-eighth.
Ascending the other individual then?
She'll be back by then, yeah. She'll be back in February.
Okay.
This person go back to thirty hours soon or again?
They'll stay full-time. I think we can use her, you know, the clinic director is is doing a lot of the billing right now until we can fill that that financial person in the Health Department. And so he's doing a lot of the billing and I think she can help with that because, you know, it's a struggle to keep up. So I think she can help with that. She can also continue helping with the data and everything that I need for the clinic.
Is it thought to have somebody fill that position? I don't know what it's going to be called at that point in time before then.
The finance person? Yeah, I think we're working on a job description to make sure that we capture everything that I want that person to do.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
As you're saying, as this says extending her to March twenty-eighth full-time, but you're saying she's going to continue after that?
No, as of March twenty-eight, she'll be done. So most will be done on the twentieth of last Friday, but they're asking to extend it eight to March, seven more pay periods to March twenty-eighth when the position would then end at that time.
Oh, okay, all right.
With grant funding and it's in June. So most of that grant funding, we're kind of budgeting for her position at this point. And so it'll take, since she's going to do forty hours, it's going to take the remainder of that grant funding.
Got you, okay. That's for the extra ten hours, but it's okay, yeah, it's okay, gotcha.
I think it's great here.
I know, I says, it's always difficult in this particular department.
Yeah. I'd move to approve the extension of a full-time temporary clerical position of medical in the public health clinic through March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll go ahead and second. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the extension of a full-time temporary clerical position of medical clerk in the public health clinic through March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. I believe I'm saying twenty-five.
Yeah, I know.
All in favor?
Please sign. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it. Next Commissioner, no items for press conference, so then you'll have Megan Lewis at nine thirty-five.
I moved recess with the Board of Health and reconvene to the Board of County Commissioners.
Second, we moved and seconded to recess as the Board of County Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commission. In favor? Ladies, how you doing?
Good morning.
Very festive today.
You are.
You look fabulous. I find that outfit and shoes beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're very, they're very swoopy.
They are. I didn't buy them for my Kenny Chesney concert.
Right? Can you know those things you do? No?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't notice, but they are, they are lovely.
Yeah, I told myself, I was like, okay, I need to make sure that this outfit looks okay. I was like, I really want to wear my smart baby. He was like, oh my God.
I mean, they make a statement for sure.
O M G.
I told him they look like swoopy shoes to me.
They're gonna do.
He smelled me too. He knows a pair of those.
Oh, yeah.
You're just building confidence back there, you know?
Yeah, right?
Yes, please compliment my shoes. They go all the way out.
Oh, wow, that's gotta readjust the eyeballs there.
Do you even have like glitter all over the car wheel or?
I don't know, I did a little first like yeah. I wore them all when we went to Kenny Chesney concert this year, but I haven't worn them since.
We might have to make a separate policy on shoes apparently.
Oh, Lord, let's not go there again. Then we'll end up, and we'll end up talking about, they're flip flops again.
No, they're closed toe and I'll let it go.
Way to go, Brittany.
Ruining it for everybody.
I shouldn't have said anything. I should have just
No, it's cool. I'm sure we've seen worse.
Yeah, okay.
No, Commissioner, okay. I'll make it easy.
It's an extension at the start, so.
Yeah. That's off the table. Supposed to rain today? It's not supposed to rain today. It's Thursday.
I think tomorrow morning, a little mist. And then Wednesday and Thursday, I think there's, Wednesday or Thursday is a pretty good chance. What sixty-something percent chance I had saying?
Christmas was, was it twenty or was it like seventy degrees? A Christmas outside.
Yeah, it's a little too warm for me on Christmas.
Christmas is South America or some kind. All out of cute, you know, like
I'd like to, because that's when the fishing's best.
Hmm, yeah.
Florida.
Yeah. Just have, have the fish for Christmas.
And I like to eat oysters while you're there, but you can only eat oysters in months with R.
Correct. Uh, no, that's not true.
That's, that's when you're least likely to get that bad disease you can get from it.
Down south? Oh, South America? I was going to say.
That's what the fishing all the people that know has to be a month with R in it.
Well, March has R in it.
Correct. Yeah, that works. That's the rule you gotta follow.
Okay, okay.
July is a no-no. August is a no-no.
Yeah.
Yep. Really like them fresh down there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. A little, you see crab cakes and oysters are always on the, always on the menu.
I've never had crab cakes.
Oh, it's
really?
Yeah, it's
I did not like it that much.
Did you have one in Florida?
Yeah, I did. I was, I was stuck plunder with some plunder with crab cakes.
That's not the same thing.
I really like plunder, but I was not, it kind of gave it to my husband and ate my fries.
The oyster locker fell over and said, oh my goodness.
Yeah, chicken's sacred.
I ordered that as an appetizer and I decided that wasn't enough, so I ordered it twenty-four times. That is my favorite.
Yeah.
Favorite restaurant. Yeah, I'd like it. Thanks, Rich.
They don't look good.
Oh, they are so good.
I'm with Rich as long as they're fresh.
Because he said she had not no shirt on.
Oh, that's not
My dad, he told me his chicken out of when we were little, he after we ate it, he was like, no, that really was.
Yeah.
We had frog legs too.
Frog legs are good.
Frog legs, yeah.
Yeah.
Love frog legs.
I don't know whether you
Well, not no.
Good morning, Megan Lewis. If you have any questions, I am here for our monthly update. I am excited to report that intake has slowed down. So for the month of November, we had eleven intake. It was a really it, yes, it has slowed down and it was a nice change for the holiday. We had new people that were scheduled over the holiday break and so for Thanksgiving, it's always a nice change. We didn't have a lot of stress, so we really appreciate that. Seven of those kiddos out of the eleven were returned to their parents. One was placed with a relative or a family friend and then one within a protected home and two placed in detention. Our youth court intervention program has also, our numbers have slowed down a little. However, we do have twenty pending referrals. So some of that is not committed yet. They're not sure if they want to take the diversion. So we're in communication with them and trying to get them scheduled.
Is that court related?
So basically what happens is it goes through the county attorney's office. They send us the referral and then if they don't respond to us, they have an amount of time where then we get back to the county attorney and then they bring them into court. Basically, they have to make a decision if they want to proceed or not. And we have seven currently on intensive supervision with Michael and one out of Clay County. And our adult services has went up. So where we slowed down in intake, we definitely increased with our adult services. We currently have a hundred and thirty-six on for our adult services. So that's been a lot. Trying to cover Clay County and we're, we've been working to get a person hired and I'll talk about that here in a few minutes. And then our recovery courts pretty much stayed the same. We have seventeen that are currently in recovery court out of Riley County and five out of Clay County. And that was for November. So that's changed a little bit. I'm here in December, but currently for that. And we have our next graduation schedule beginning the twenty-second, if anyone is interested in the pending. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about one of the services that we provide for our adult services, Clay County program. And we have Job Club. And when we present our, we talked to you about our Behavioral Health money and that, that money funds Brett Green's position. It's a collaborative event with Quonomenal Health. And so our Job Club is also, it's a weekly program and it focuses to help our justice-involved individuals overcome the barriers to employment. They gain soft skills or employability skills. It helps them to gain knowledge of their personal interests and skills so that they find jobs that are a better fit for them. And we either have different employment options in the community, then based on their experience and interest, helps them seek those opportunities out. And it really is effective so that they can gain interpersonal skills in the workplace. We've provided this service for over ten years in the community. We hold that. It's at the Workforce Center here in Manhattan on Tuesdays at nine AM. And for the month of November, we have seven people that participated and three out of the seven were able to obtain full-time employment in November. And then if you want to go back from July to November, twenty out of the twenty-nine that we served or sixty-nine percent have obtained employment since July. So we're pretty excited about that. Some other updates I wanted to make sure that you were aware of is the Department of Corrections has changed their due date for our comprehensive plan. It is now due on March fifteenth instead of May first. That picks it up quite a bit.
Twenty twenty-five, I'm assuming?
Twenty twenty-five, yeah. So, so it's just this, but it's for our twenty twenty-five program, yeah. So we'll probably end up having to do a request to get on the agenda earlier to present that, to have that done. I want to make sure you wrote that. And then also starting in January, we will have our program review with the King's Department of Corrections, which essentially is an audit. And they will review all of our programs that we offer and we'll have a corrective action plan for everything that we have to correct and get back to them. We'll work together to resolve any issues. And then we have hired an intensive supervision officer for Clay County.
Oh, good year, almost been a year now.
I'm so excited.
Big shoes to fill. Big shoes to fill.
It's gonna do great. January sixth is the start date and I really, we're all very excited to get it.
Good.
And that is all I have.
Good morning. I have before you the adult and alcohol grants and general city alcohol grant for CY twenty-five. It's essentially the same thing for both, just different amounts and we do need two separate approvals. We have been awarded, Community Corrections has been awarded money since two thousand and eleven. For adult services, we apply towards twenty-four seven fifty and receive almost all of that for requested twenty-two seventy. We use these funds for both adult We use these funds for both adult and juvenile services to pay for drug and alcohol assessments, counseling, um classes on prevention. And then um also for the drug tests and supplies. So the, for juvenile services, I apologize, we requested forty. They have their five thousand seven fifty, and we received the full hundred percent that we requested. So we're reporting, they just asked for approval on the grant agreements.
I believe they need to make separate.
Have I moved to approve the adult services city alcohol grant agreement?
I'll second. So it's been moved and approved to approve the adult city, service cities alcohol grant agreement, all in favor?
Moved to approve the juvenile services city alcohol grant agreement.
Second, they moved and approved.
Chairman.
Moved and seconded to approve the juvenile services city alcohol grant agreement. Favor?
Thank you, ladies. And Merry Christmas.
Yes.
Next commissioner, you have a rehearsal at nine forty-five. Morning, Larry. Morning, Josh, how you doing?
How are you guys?
Good.
Good. If you'd like to, Lori, you can go ahead and go early. I, I think I saw him on there or there, yeah. I saw him on there earlier at least. Um, widescreen there, the small screen again.
The top right corner, second thing over.
Yeah, there he is.
There he is, there is all. Can you then?
Let's do it.
Alright. Um, we had a emergency management planner position become vacant uh December twelve. And so we're asking for permission to advertise and fill the position. Um, this is our planner position, so it's very important to the county emergency plans, all of the coop plans that the departments have within the county, and the emergency action guides. Uh, it maintains and develops a hazardous materials database, and also helps with presentations. So it is a full-time position and funded by our emergency management performance grant. As long as we receive that grant, there should be no major fiscal impact uh to the county. Uh, and it is a position that was approved in the twenty twenty-five budget. Do you have any questions about the position? We recommend advertising it?
We switch it from halftime to full-time.
Yeah, because we were able to get the grant to cover the other, the other half of that, so if we ever lost the grant, we could. I mean, it would really be tough to go back to a part-time job, but um I. Maybe someone else is great. I think it's the same thing, so.
We can just hang on to it for a couple of years. I've moved to approve the requisition to fill the emergency management planner position for recruitment.
I'll second. It's been moved and approved. Moved and seconded to approve the requisition to fill the emergency management planner position for recruitment. All in favor?
Vote please sign. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Yep, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thanks, Russell.
Josh, commissioner? Go ahead, go to Josh.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, Josh Gearing, EMS ambulance assistant director. Um, here today, uh requesting to fill a full-time EMT position. Uh, this position was uh vacated recently. It's a full-time, uh direct patient care position on uh our EMS A shift. Which is part of the rotating Berkeley, Berkeley ships that we have. Um, this is a budgeted full-time EMT position. Uh, the position does provide uh direct patient care. Um, and it's assigned to an ambulance and is also responsible for holding event standbys. Um, because it's a budgeted position, there is no adverse effect to our budget with filling. Uh, failure to fill the open, though, however, would result in increased overtime, overtime costs um uh to maintain a response posture and then fill it with other uh full timers. Um, so we recommend that we uh, we advertise and fill. Uh, we have two candidates who are, are currently in the pipeline interested. Rel- relatively quickly with the hiring process, hopefully uh before like early January. Uh, stay am I for any questions you guys have or any comments?
I moved, moved to approve requisition to fill the EMT position.
I'll second. They're moving the second into approving their requisition to fill the EMT position for recruitment. All in favor?
And Josh, have Merry Christmas. Enjoy that boy.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Commissioners, uh, Brian Perker, Riley County Councilor. Uh, I had nothing to add beyond uh the uh work report that was included in your packet, and I stand for any questions. I can scroll down to that very quickly. I've updated the format slightly, so that we talk about our ongoing tasks. Which is pretty generic, but is a good representation of what we do. And then under current projects, uh, we, uh, I list, this is a partial list. It's not full. It's not all that uh Jake and I have been working on, but it's a list of, of many of the things we have been advising on. Uh, and these could include everything from interpreting state law to if there's paperwork involved. Uh, we do that as well. I know it's a little different than how Clancy did his list, and we, this is very much a work in progress, so if the commission would prefer to see uh the Clancy's format, we're happy to do that. Also, um, any tweaks to this, please let us know how you would like for it to be done. I'm just trying to give uh, give the commission and, and anyone else be arrested uh in our department's work, uh information about what we're the current things that we're trying to help out on around the county.
Well, what's me, you know, one of those that firing range, where exactly is that?
Uh, yes, mission. Um, so we have reached out with, uh, and that's one of the things that uh Clancy uh did as one of his final acts. Uh, we've, we've provided several dates uh to uh Mr. Knopf, who is uh, uh Mr. Seymour's attorney, for us to all go out and tour the range, uh, the specific to the road. Because we're, we're looking at how we can make uh some improvements to that. And so that's, we circulated dates after coordinating with uh Emily Alvin and John Ellman up with the Public Works Department. And once we hear back on those, then I'm pretty sure Jake and I, cuz it sounds like a, a two county councilor mission. That's.
Not three?
Not three, not three, although we, you know, we still have our, we still have our bullpen, since we live in the same apartment complex. We're, we're gonna leave our bullpen uh uh pitcher uh alone on this one, and we'll all go out and tour and uh, try to get a little bit of a lay of the ring.
Have you been out there?
I have not been out to the old range yet.
Uh, you, you need, have you been to the new one? So you need to go to the old one and then go visit the new one to see the improvement.
Oh, yeah.
Then as that day, they're right beside each other, so it'd be good to kinda time it and have John take you to that. Seriously. It'd be good for you both to know where it's at, but huge improvement.
That makes great sense. That's a great suggestion. Absolutely. We have been, I know that Jake and I have both been very intentional about making the rounds to as many Riley County locations as we possibly can.
And they're both right there, real close to each other.
Sounds good. Any questions, commission? Anything else? No. Thank you very much.
Okay, I think we have one item of business still to take care of, is that right?
That's right. How good is your crystal balls?
Not very good. I don't know, for some reason, I don't got a good feeling about this.
Agreed.
Um, the line is seven as of yesterday. I'm not, not seeing it. Um. Oh, I'll, um, I think it's gonna be a it's gonna be a knock-down, drag-out type of game. I'm gonna go twenty-seven, twenty-five cats.
Great.
Yeah, my predictions, I had three, but I think it was in the first four or five games, and I haven't said anything.
Yeah, you, you are ahead. You're at three. You are in the lead.
Where they like say the first four games or something. But uh, I'm going twenty-eight, seventeen.
Good guys, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Right?
As much as I'm, I'm almost tempted to pick them to lose, because it seems like when I pick them to win, they go in. But I think I'm gonna go twenty-one nineteen cats.
Trying to price is writing me over here.
Yeah, none of us are too far off. I had written down two weeks ago, twenty-four, twenty-one.
So it's gonna be thirty or forty points, since we're all that close together.
Yeah, I don't know. I haven't seen that type of production come off.
I'd like to see that.
Last year's whole game we did.
I remember we did that with the quarterback change, so we don't have that this year.
And we had a one thing that really helps a quarterback and running back look good is a dominant offensive line. We had that.
We did.
But then, other one, Joe Jackson.
I think Jackson will be good.
He's spelled in.
I think I'll see four different running backs in this game. Edwards, Rice, Johnson, Jackson.
I'm not convinced Edwards is gonna be our star back.
That's something we used.
They're not using right.
We gotta get him out in space, so you need to have the the third down back, the ones that can run a post and second down and hopefully they figure it out.
Jackson's more my style.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
That's, I guess that's all for business today, so. Uh, wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Do whatever it is that you do, and do it well.
I'll move to adjourn the uh, what are we, some twenty-third meeting, Board of County Commissioners.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn the December twenty-third eve of Christmas Eve, Board of Riley County Commission meeting.